I hereby swear.
For firm.
For firm.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced by any consideration.
I shall not be influenced by any consideration.
Except that of merit.
Except that of merit.
And fitness.
And fitness.
And the appointment.
And the appointment.
Or discharge of employees.
Or discharge of employees.
I shall not make.
I shall not make.
Or authorize.
Or authorize.
The expenditure of public money.
The expenditure of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
Efficient service to the village.
Efficient service to the village.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And partially.
And partially.
Discharge the duties of member of council.
Discharge the members of duty of council.
For the Village of Hicksville.
For the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Defiance County, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st, 2021.
For the term ending December 31st, 2021.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
When you come in, you want to bang?
Okay, um, welcome Charlie.
Thank you.
Um, I want to thank Eric for last two weeks ago, uh, running the council meeting, doing mayor's court for me. I appreciate it. You did a fine job. Thank you for that. Uh, approval of the April 5th regular council minute meetings.
They're in your packet.
Any additions or corrections?
I got one. Uh, it comes down here and then it said that, uh, this is in the Ross Comissal statement and then it says that I said, uh, not even close to what I said and I don't see any reason for it to be in there at all. So why don't we take it out? Well, it's not what I said. It's what Comissal said. Thomaso.
Okay. Any other corrections?
Can we do that, Mayor? Can we take?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yep.
If that's what we want to know exactly what happened.
No, I don't need that in there.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes with corrections.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Basset?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Um, you have before you the approval bills. Any questions? Second?
I second.
Roll call.
Who's seconded?
Charlie.
Charlie. The new guy.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Basset?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Barth?
I'm staying.
Okay, now I see we have an amended agenda. I just saw that, sorry. So I need a motion to accept the amended and it's in the solicitor's report. Uh, first reading resolution 21, 2021-06.
Right. That was added.
Make a motion to accept the revised agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Klepper?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
That the only one we changed is that one?
Yeah.
In the solicitor's report.
Basset?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
We did the bills. Okay, um, on the agenda, first up is Susan Mack from the Beautification Committee.
Thank you. Um, the main reason I'm here and I'd like to also recognize Diane Collins and Sheila Basset, who are also.
Baker.
Sheila Baker's here. Sheila Baker, who are also members of our committee. And, um, our main reason for being here is to thank you for your support through the years. I try and come once a year, somebody from our committee, just to let you know what's going on, to answer any questions. We're, we feel fortunate to be able to have a part-time employee that the village pays for. And, um, and I think as we look at what we've accomplished over the years, it's been pretty amazing for a small group of volunteers. And probably our biggest need is for more volunteers, younger volunteers. Um, we're fortunate to have, um, Kelsey Klepper as part of our committee, but she's significantly younger than the rest, the rest of our group. And we'd love to have more Kelseys as part of our committee. Um, one thing we've talked about over the years, we'd like to get some new planters downtown because those cement hypochuba, those big planters really need to be replaced. But we thought that the village was going to be doing, um, new garbage cans, trash cans. And so we were sort of waiting for that so that we could match whatever was going to be done downtown. So that's, that's one thing that we have on hold. And I think, um, I gave, each one of you should have a sheet that has some of our challenges and opportunities. And, um, these are the things that we're going to be working on for the next year. And I put on the other side, because the beautification committee operates under the nonprofit umbrella of the Community Service Center. And for anybody that doesn't know, the Community Service Center is located in the, on the west side of the police department. And so the village provides that to the center at no cost. So we have, we appreciate that and we appreciate the support of, of Kent with any issues that we have and things that, that we do over the years. So both these, committees and boards operate with no other employees. And, um, I think we have a great group of volunteers working with both of those. And in closing, at the Community Service Center, we recently are cleaning out all our files, which hadn't been done since, I think, the eighties. And in that, I found, um, a proposed community and senior center, which was taking the Rotary Pavilion and expanding it. And this, these drawings were done back in 99. There was a small committee. It involved Rotary, it involved the village, it involved some other people. Nothing ever happened with this, but I think it would be good for you to look at it at some point and see what kind of possibilities would be available with the Rotary Pavilion. And I also found from the late nineties, a park and recreation guide. And this was really a neat document and it basically has in it, and I'll leave it with Mayor Jones, um, all the things that happened in the park. Plus, it also talked about a summer park program, which is something from the Community Service Center that we'd really like to see us go back to at some point. Because we do have a wonderful park. We have great people that take care of it, but there's all kinds of other activities that could happen in that park. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Mac.
Thank you, beautification committee, for all the work that they did.
Definitely.
Oh, yeah.
You guys do a lot.
It's been incredible.
We appreciate, we get a lot of help from the village and we appreciate that from here. Yeah.
Susan, how many different flower areas do you guys currently beautify?
Over 20.
Really? That's a bunch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, um, yeah, we're looking, we're getting ready to get started again. Thanks a lot.
You want to tell them about your upcoming sale?
Say, do you want to call, call attention to the plant sale coming up here?
Plant sale.
May 16.
Yeah, plant sale is Mother's Day weekend and we're back to having a full-fledged sale at the township building. Um, so we'd love to have your support. We always look, are looking for volunteers and especially, um, healthy young males that can help us move.
That leaves me out.
The healthier, the young part?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm emphasizing the healthy more than the young. But we, we have to move, depending on the weather, we have to move lots of stuff first thing in the morning and, um, in the evening if the weather's not real good. But the commissioners normally come over and help, so we'd love to have council members help also.
Hint, hint.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, up next, Mike Brown from the American Legion.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing, uh, allowing us a few minutes of time to kind of fill in what, uh, the Legion's doing right now. Uh, we're in the process at the Legion of, of putting in, uh, either a wheelchair ramp or some kind of a handicap accessory, uh, thing to our building. So, uh, we can utilize the building more for, for everybody instead of just healthy peoples. So, uh, but anyway, uh, Saturday, May 1st, uh, we have our, uh, donut sales. Now, this is the second one that we've done. The proceeds from the donut sales is going to go towards, uh, the veterans that are, uh, homebound in the rest homes and then, uh, also towards this wheelchair ramp or whatever. Uh, but we got three different types of donuts. We've got, uh, that day, cinnamon, plain and, and the sugar donut. Uh, you can order these ahead of time if you want, uh, by calling Legion Hall. The number there is 419-542-7295. You can place your order. They'll all be ready for you. Uh, we've got, uh, enter and exit signs for the building. Uh, everybody will be entering, if they go down East High and go past the building on the north side and, and go around the building, come back, they pick their donuts up right at the main entrance, make it real easy for everybody. Uh, we'll start having those at seven o'clock in the morning on the first. Uh, then, uh, the next big item that we have is our, we're, we're planning on having our Memorial Day parade. And, uh, unless something with COVID would change that. But, uh, we're trying to make this one of the best parades that we've had since we haven't had one for a couple of years. Uh, Bella Woods in charge of the, uh, golf carts and bicycles. We're going to, uh, have prizes for the kids and the people with golf carts that decorate them. Uh, so, uh, he's in, he's in charge of that. The Hicksville Band, uh, will be leading the parade. Uh, we'll start the parade with the playing of the National Anthem before we actually take off on the parade. And, uh, then of course the band will play out at the cemetery also and probably in groups and whatever, whatever the band director decides. Uh, right now, we're pairing up with the Rotary Club, uh, for a future date of a Uker tournament. Uh, this will be open to the public. Uh, the only thing that, that they will have to call and reserve their spot in a tournament. So we know how many tables and that. And there'll be food and, and refreshments and, you know, whatnot for that. And, uh, and of course prizes for the winner of the tournament. And then also we're looking at pool and shuffleboard tournaments down the road. And, uh, we're still planning on having our 100th anniversary sometime, whenever the COVID restrictions are released where we can have a large number of people. And, uh, basically that's what we got going on right now. Uh, we've got our parade, uh, the parade permit is turned in and signed. And so I don't know if we have to have you, the council approve the parade or just, you know, we're, we're set to go.
This town needs a parade. So appreciate you organizing it.
Okay.
The Legion.
Well, we, we hope, we, we had a good turnout last year.
Yes.
Without having a parade, uh, our guest speaker this year is going to be, uh, one of the police sergeants here, uh, Doc, the Doc, Doctor. So he's agreed to be our guest speaker. I think he'll be a good one.
Wow.
He, he has some tales of right after 9/11 and, uh, the ships that he was out on and some different things. So, uh, I wanted to get a veteran that, that, uh, you know, didn't set at home. They were out doing their, doing their duty and, and I think the Doctor's a, a good one to, to have. And so I'm looking forward to, to having him as our guest speaker and he's agreed to it somewhere or the other. And, uh, but, uh, we're looking forward to Memorial Day and, uh, we just hope everybody can help in by attending and don't forget our donut sales.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Any questions?
Good job. Thanks.
How much are the donuts?
How much are donuts?
Uh, $5 a dozen.
Okay, next on the agenda, Lou Ramenez. I guess that's how you pronounce your name?
Rivera.
Lou Ramirez.
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 All different names.
From the Defiance Baseball Association. Oh, okay.
We actually wanted two things real quick. The first one's going to be simple. I was just wondering, most of the backstops down at the park have 45s to catch the foul balls. And the ones at the little league right now just go straight up. So we're, get a lot of foul balls off. And one issue is one of the fields gets sun bad and it's a, it's going to be a big safety concern. Somebody's going to get hit by a ball because the sun's going to be in their eyes. We thought, well, if somehow we could get them to put the 45s, maybe they could put like a screen or something, something windproof through that 45 to block the shade. And we were wondering if there's anything where you guys could budget something like that.
That'd be park board to put in the.
Reason I came here usually, I mean, I went to the park board in the past and it seems like you guys make the decision. So that's why I wanted to.
We approve their spending.
Okay.
For.
And the second issue, before we get started, I don't want this to turn into no screaming match, uh, no names involved like the last time. But we, we have an issue with the way these background checks are going. It sounded great, but it's, I mean, we're down here, we're, we're just finishing up like a $60,000 project at the park. I mean, everything's going smooth. We're ordering uniforms, making schedules, getting people signed up. This was not what we wanted, phone calls on these background checks. I mean, we're getting hammered. We're getting kids that aren't playing because dad can't coach. So we got redo teams, redo uniforms. It's like, so we, Defiance is really respected in the area with their baseball association and everything. We contacted Mr. Rivera. And his main thing was, well, did you guys decide to do the background checks? You know, I said, no, it's being forced upon us. And he said, well, why is, uh, council and park board have anything to, to do with how you guys are running your league, you know? And his, we came up with, in return, this, we came up with a code of conduct for the coaches, you know, that they would have to sign. And in here, we put, at any time, all coaches, this is not, this is what we're proposing. At any time, all coaches may be subject to a criminal background check if there's ever a question on one or whatever. I mean, we graduated on half the people down there coaching. We know what, what's going to happen. You know, I did my background check this year. If I get in trouble, everybody's going to know in Hicksville that I got in trouble and can't coach. I mean, I think it's just, I don't know. I, I really think that we're, we're citing it as a liability issue, which I understand. But I think if we want to go that route, I could, I could cite liability for anything that goes on down there at the park. I mean, and actually I pulled up a copy of our lease that we signed with the park board. And on pay, or letter four of it, it said, "The association hereby agrees to indemnify and hold harmless of village, any employees of the village and the Village Park Board and its members from any and all claims which may arise as a result of the association's use of the Village Park facilities as well as the operation." You know, there's that. And also our parents signed a liability waiver that we're not liable. We're willing to sign a liability waiver with you guys that we're, you know, that we'd be liable if something happened down there, not you guys. I mean, there's so much stuff. I mean, a guy could take a kid down there and teaching tennis lessons and something could happen. I mean, anything could happen at that park. Let's hope nothing ever happens. But I just think the liability is the wrong avenue to take if we're going to force these. And I, I, the main thing is it's our board and you know, it's, we got eight guys on that board. We're all trusted guys. We should be trusted enough to make decisions on these coaches. And what I, I did make copies of the code of conduct. I'd like to give all you guys that. And then I'll introduce Mr. Rivera and he can speak on behalf of them.
Okay.
This is our proposal though to.
Can I make a comment?
No. Yeah, we got it. Here you go.
Number one, uh, I respect the gentleman that you brought with you.
Yeah.
Uh, I've heard, I've heard good things, all only good things about him. Uh, I don't think we need defiance over here solving a problem in our park. Number two, the problem with our park should not be at this meeting. You should be at the park board. That is who runs your place. That's who you deal with.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Last year I went to the park board meeting. I got all the park board members to vote against needing background checks. And a week later, the council overruled that.
Is that correct?
Well, Troy?
We.
Yes, it is.
But I.
It is true.
From the get-go, we wanted background checks.
Okay.
I, the park board voted against them.
Well, I think this changed. And so why don't we have the gentleman speak? We'll listen to him.
Okay.
I think he'd come over, just see what he's got to say. He's on the agenda.
Hello, everyone. My name is, uh, Louis Rivera. I am, I'm going to list a little bit of background about me. I am, for one, I'm, I am assistant coach for the Defiance football team, Defiance Parity Football Team. I am the president of the Fifth Masonic District, uh, which covers Williams County, Defiance County, Fulton and Henry, and the president of the Temple Board, which is in Defiance, Ohio there. I'm also the president of the Defiance Baseball Association, which is why I'm here today. But the reason why I said those other things was that we do similar things within those organizations. So I have a lot of experience with, um, not only background checks, but also kind of evaluating, you know, certain policies and procedures and so on and so forth. I've, they've, and Hicksville Baseball Association reached out to us and basically, you know, I didn't want to solve any problems. I mean, the only thing I'm here to do is just assist in any way, shape or form. I think you guys have a great town. I mean, Hicksville's always been, it's always been a clean town. It's always been just, I mean, it's a great place to visit. I love it. I mean, it's one of the jewels in Defiance County and I always praise it, especially when, uh, people come into town from out of town. It's like, hey, you know what? Let's go to, to Bandits here in, in Defiance County. Or let's go to the Defiance, uh, County Fair. What, you know, so on and so forth. Uh, as far as the baseball association, and like I said, I am the president of the Defiance Baseball Association. We have, uh, roundabout almost 400 kids playing in our organization. And like I said, it's probably, you know, 150 to 200 coaches that we have. Within the last couple of years, we've actually adopted the protect youth sports as far as the background checks, um, just because a lot of our board members do not know who's coming in. Now, we have recommendations that come to the board and this helps us review that process. Now, to me, and I feel this with Hicksville, you guys are a small enough organization where you know pretty much who's coming in and, you know, basically their background. Um, and it's, and just like what I told these guys is that, you know, how we based whoever we bring into the organization basically stands where we stand. So they're going to have defiance cross their chest, which is why the code of conduct, we have the same thing. We have that for not only coaches, but also for parents. Because if they act unruly on the field, one way, you know, whatever, if that goes against that code of conduct, they will be dismissed from coaching. This is their first and final warning that they have. And, you know, we have basically zero tolerance now. When I say zero tolerance, I, I, there is a case by case review that we have with each and every coach and each and every situation, because each and every situation is a little different. Now, obviously if there's a parent that's cussing out a kid, that's not even their kid or anything else like that, out in the field, they're going to be banned. And we had several issues like that where I had to make that decision and reprimand some of those, uh, uh, not only parents, but also coaches as well. Uh, there was a coach that, uh, suspended for arguing with an umpire. Now, I would have suspended him basically for the rest of the season for the mere fact that he came, but well, and I reinstated him, I, with two weeks later, for the mere fact that he came to me and he apologized. And he said, you know what? I understand the wrongdoing that I did. And, you know, with that, I said, okay, well, here's your next chance. And from there on, he was one of the best coaches that I think we pretty much had in the league. I mean, he straight up turned around just like that. Again, uh, we have, in our organization, we do those background checks. It is not required by the city. Uh, that is something that we have, um, incorporated within ourselves to basically protect our organization. Just because we have so many kids, so many parents, or so many coaches within our organization that we kind of want to protect ourselves. And like I said, you guys being a village kind of smaller, I think that the, the Hicksville Baseball Association can handle that. I think that they can do that, and especially working with the Parks Board. Uh, again, I am also on the Parks Board for Defiance, uh, for Defiance City. So, I mean, I kind of know the rumblings and I'm, I'm in and around everywhere. I mean, Defiance, uh, Strategic Planning Group, I'm the actually lead chair for the perception committee. So, um, I will be in touch with some of you guys probably a little later on in the, in the year here to talk about your city and how we can actually do that perception good. But, but, um, that's where it starts though. That baseball association, I mean, you look at how many kids are out there. Like, I went out there and I seen the, the work that's been done and it's phenomenal. I mean, what a great experience for those kids. And not only that, what a privilege it is to actually coach those kids and teach them how to be not only respectful, but also, you know, better adults. Um, you know, I can't go on and on, I can go on and on about, like I said, your committee and, or your, uh, community and whatnot. But, um, but like I said, you know, I'm here just in support. I'm not here to change anything. Alls I'm here to say is that, you know, this is why we do what we do. And it's, it's been working for us for a number of years. I've been the president for the DBA for probably the past five years, um, and served on the board for probably five before that. So, I mean, I've been in and around the community. I've had kids actually once play in high school against Dora right now. Um, and then I have two younger kids that are kind of going through the system. And like I said, we're, we're evolving. We're changing with the times and, and, uh, the main thing, the main thing what we want is a great experience for that kid. And if it's not, it's, it's not happening because of a coach, then that coach is dismissed and he's not able to coach. You know, you have to give them, I, I want to give them that chance. If, if that coach is more than willing and he's more than put the effort in, especially like, for instance, like if there's wrongdoing that happened in the past, I'm a believer in second chances. I really am. And I think that people do change and they, and they can, and they proved it. Uh, we actually have a coach that's coaching now. He's actually served prison time. And, you know, now he's a pastor and he's one of the best coaches and great role models for kids right now. The kids don't know what his past was. They only know him in that moment in time. And like I said, that's where I think that these guys are as well from talking with them. And, um, like I said, I think that they'll do great things and, and they're, they're looking for the future. And that's good. And I think with your guys' support, I, I think you guys will, I mean, it, it'll make it a great community. So, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions though.
Yes.
So does the fight softball do the same exact?
Yes.
So, does Defiance softball do the same exact way you do?
No. Defiance softball, see, that's...
So, what makes your way the right way?
It doesn't.
Okay. Just double checking.
The only thing is...
Because we use protect youth sports, too, for background checks.
Okay.
And the conduct doesn't specify anything on what would disqualify somebody?
That's in our policy.
Okay. So, right this off, DUI?
Yep.
But that's not in ours.
That's...
You guys are more strict on some of your stuff than what we are in ours.
It's a case-by-case basis.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanted it cut and dry, not sat there where you're going to choose on...
But the thing is, is that, like, for instance, like, if we've had guys that actually had a DUI or something like that, or maybe got driving under suspension, you know, would that disqualify a coach?
DUI? No.
So, none of that?
DUI does not disqualify you from coaching.
And driving under suspension?
Have you ever looked at our list from the...
No, I, and like I said, I mean, I'm pretty sure that, no.
We're here for these years because when I come to meetings, Troy refers to Defiance does it like this, Defiance does it like this.
Exactly like he described today. I'm one of the coaches. I submitted to the, I submitted to one of the background checks.
You know, just like you mentioned with Defiance softball, okay, they're under the USA Association.
Yeah, we've not had one complaint from anybody on the softball league, because they've been doing background checks on their own for a couple of years now.
Yes.
And they're required to come to Defiance and wear their name tag to their own field for softball.
If we...
Because of COVID.
The one reason they did it, because they played in the DSA, they had to do it.
Okay. Now, not one person on the softball has complained all year. We've had hundreds of calls from the baseball side.
Eric, we got like...
I'm just asking what the difference is.
We have like 200 kids and a lot more coaches than what the softball. And to return to Ron's question, why Defiance has to solve this, it's because I reached out to all, to all the area communities, and Defiance is the only one that requires background checks. So, we called and asked them about it. None of these other small communities, they all said, we would never get volunteers if we had to do background checks. That's, I don't...
Let me ask you this.
Why is the city council telling us how to run the HBA?
Because you're using our field.
Who owns Defiance's fields?
Uh, the city.
They didn't have to tell them, they did it on their own.
We tried to do it on our own. We had to sign...
No, 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 they did background checks on their own.
We had to sign up to do background checks for free this year. And we couldn't, because the softball wouldn't have been involved with them free background checks. They wanted it all the same.
Where were you getting background checks at?
It was through Jeremy Vanmore.
He was his mom.
No idea.
No, he wouldn't, because she works at the sheriff's office.
Time out. Time out. She told us. Okay? Because those would have been fingerprints, and you would have got billed. Well, I'm telling you, she told us. Time out.
I didn't want to come here and argue. I'm just...
Okay, it's getting a little heated. Need to slow it down a little bit. I've got a question. This code of conduct, is this something new?
That's what they have. They have a code of conduct.
You know, there's some good stuff on here, but just, I think the council's wishes is to do the background check. Bottom line.
I would interject here and say, I voted yes for the background checks. I did. We did not discuss to what standards they were going to be held, who was monitoring them, and who was going to enforce them. Those are things that were not discussed, those set by, set in place by the park board. So, I, once again, I am in favor of background checks, but I'm not in favor of village council telling another association how to use, how to run their league. Because if you're going to get the HBA to, if you're going to start dictating how the HBA operates, you need to get involved with the day in the park, you need to get involved with any volleyball tournaments down there, you need to get involved with anything. Because if it's about liability, it's about any organized event that's happening down there. So, if that's the case, we're going to make, if anybody's leasing the pavilion for an event, any of that stuff. Because it does, if you're making the case that it's about liability, and it's about somebody using...
It's about more than liability, but it is liability.
It's about not one kid being abused physically, sexually, you know, anything. It's about that. Now, does that mean that everybody who gets excluded by a background check is going to do, no, it doesn't. But you got to have some set of standards.
But none of these standards were discussed amongst council. So, we just had...
Seventy-five years, has that, when's the last time that's happened down there? I just can't...
One time's too many.
I can tell you this, when I was running the sex offender unit, I received several years ago from the president of the baseball association, you had two sex offenders coaching, and they did not know it.
That's not this new group. I don't care who it was.
He just asked in 75 years.
When something's happened down there, that's what I asked. Because if you want to go to the liability issue, you might as well shut the park down. Because, I mean, there's so much stuff that goes down there that could happen. That's why I said, we're willing to sign a waiver.
Yeah, and you understand what that's worth. What's the baseball association have in assets?
That's why I said, we'll sign a waiver.
What the village, yeah, I would, too.
We'll sign a waiver freeing you guys of it. That's what I'm saying.
And then when we get sued, we're going to say, oh, yeah, we got sued for $300,000. Where's the baseball association's $300,000? Oh, you don't have it. So, that, that waiver's not worth the piece of paper it's written on.
And, you know, let's...
I have a quick scenario, and I'm just asking. Through, if a coach wants to coach through HBA, say, from five to seven, he can't coach because he didn't pass a background check. Is he allowed to stay after on the same field and pitch balls and hit grounders with his kids and some of his kids' friends? Is he allowed to use the field?
He's not banned by the, banned from the park.
Because it's the same, like, that...
It's, 2015, the Jerry Sandusky law come out, their rule, and it says, regular and routine maintenance by an adult with kids that are not yours on a routine, regular basis. So, if that parent was going in there day by day by day, or, you know, every week on Wednesdays from three to five with certain kids, that'd be regular routine maintenance or practice. But if you came in there one day with your kid and a couple of his buddies and played, you know, a home run derby or something, no, you wouldn't. Day in the park's a one-day event with more adults. I mean, there's a lot of adults in there. They, the Easter egg hunt, all the, all the parents and adults come in with the kids. It's not like there's one, one adult with 25 kids at practice.
There's never a time there's one adult with 25 kids. I just want to correct you there. There's always more adults there than practices.
Okay, I've got, you know, how many people did the background check, paid their own?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. How many did not pass?
One.
Got a red flag? Just one.
But people didn't take it because they knew they wouldn't pass.
I think I'm speaking on the council. They want background checks, right? May I, yes?
This, this is my recommendation. You follow the background checks that was put in place for this year, okay? Which is under the Ohio Defiance Code. That code is set forth, you can't even be a teacher, you can't be a coach, and you can't volunteer. That's why those statutes are there, all right? They will not allow you if you've got a conviction. It doesn't matter who you are or what you do, all right? That's why the Ohio Defiance Code was chosen, because it's black and white. You can't decipher and go against that.
Okay.
You stick with that for this year. At the end of the baseball softball season, you reevaluate some of those offenses, and you can install, you know, guidelines, maybe in five years, if there was something, you know, if it's been more than five years, depending on what the offenses, all right, you may be able to look at it that way.
Okay.
And I think that's what they're looking for. They're looking for a compromise.
Yeah, that's what I, that's my next step. Wait a second.
You guys are messing up a good thing. I'm telling you, there's a good thing going on down there, and with you guys telling us how to run it, I'm, there's, is there anything down here that we're doing that's wrong right now? Is there anything you guys know about?
Because, because one person didn't make it out of 90, 98?
There's more than one, Ron. People didn't take it because they knew they couldn't pass it.
Let's, let's slow it down a little bit.
There's more than one.
I'm, I'm for compromise.
People didn't take it because they knew they didn't pass it.
I'm for compromise, and I think the park board, you know, they say, let's tweak it.
I got them to vote against it.
Okay, no, come on, come on, let me finish. Let me finish. No, no, let me finish.
Go ahead.
They're willing to compromise, okay? Maybe take the felony part out. There's different things, the years, maybe five, you know, now it's forever. I think we need to compromise. Would you agree with that?
We do need to compromise, but...
Okay, but you're not going to get it done by arguing.
I know, one of their park board members who voted for these background checks was all for it, has his son playing on the new field out on 49 for a guy that...
Tells us what to do, and he can...
Yeah.
Okay.
His son's playing out there for a team that can't play at the park.
And I don't think the compromise is going to solve all the problems, but it's a start. I, instead of saying, this is cut and dry, if you, if you get a red flag, you're out. Are you willing, Lindsay, you're the president of the board?
Okay, so, could I just take it from what we spoke about today? So...
Do you want to come up here?
Um, I guess, um, but I'll just speak about this a little bit, and then Adam's got the whole thing. So, are we all in agreeance that the background checks aren't going away? Okay, so, they're not, they're not going away. So, right now, they're strict. I think our compromise...
Want to keep the background check? Yes.
I'm not in favor of the village mandating background checks. I think individual organizations should handle their own operation.
Okay, so, can I go on with our compromise that we came up with?
We'll read for the day in the park. The kid gets molested at the day in the park.
They also have liability insurance they take out for that day in the park.
Can I just say what our compromise was?
Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, I think, I guess, sorry, my mind. Um, I think right now, the all felonies, I think that's too strict. I think if we just go to all violent and sexual felonies, all sexual misdemeanors, and drug and alcohol for five years, I think that that's a good compromise.
No.
No.
No way.
So, so if somebody stole from the church, or stole from the school, or stole...
So, somebody throws a brick through a window when they're 19, right now?
No, I'm saying somebody that, somebody was, you guys, you guys take people's monies and donations, and...
I don't take any money.
No, but like the league, the league takes people's money, and there's always a nonprofit type of stuff like that. There's always somebody gets in there and steals from, from the kid. So, you're saying somebody that doesn't have a theft or an issue, been, been charged with theft before?
This is just...
The sexuals where you lost me. Anybody that molested a kid, I don't care.
No, that's...
She said they were out.
So, they're out.
Okay, misdemeanor or felony.
I said, any sexual misdemeanor or felony, you're out.
Okay, all right. Felony if that's a violent.
Any violent.
Okay.
And then alcohol and drugs going back five years, I think that's a starting point, if we are going to compromise.
So, by that, you're still going to lose your, your guy you're fighting for.
We ain't fighting for nobody. That's what I'm fighting for. This is the one scenario, and I'm not friends with...
All right, I'm going to sit down. That's just...
Thank you, Lindsay.
I don't go out and see people that I'm friends with and fight for. And this is another scenario. A guy, when he's 19 years old, rear-ended an alibi. He's got aggravated assault on his record for hitting an alibi. He's a super good guy. He's a great coach. I coached with him. His wife's a nurse, I mean, they're a great family in this community. I don't think somebody like him should be punished. I mean, I could leave tonight, any of us could leave, and we could get in a car accident and hurt somebody. That don't make us say we're going to molest a kid. That don't make us say we're going to hurt anybody. We're not violent people. I'm, again, we're, we're background checks, we're final background checks, and we know it's not going away. What we are for, given some of those, like an accident, a car accident, you're not giving a second chance. I mean, we're dying for volunteers. I put a post on Facebook looking for volunteers. You know how many showed up? Zero. I've been down at the park four weeks straight for 40 hours a day, where I'm, no one in our HBA today has any, we don't want no kids to get hurt, we don't want no kids to get sexually molested. And again, I'm not even friends with this guy, the guy with alibi record. I think that's, we should at least be able to sit down as a group or a committee and say, you know, let's look at the past thing. He has no record, he has no past charges, he has no DUIs. This is 22 years, and we should do a...
But you guys have lived in a small town long enough to know that if you do it like you're saying, and what you're saying upstairs here is going to be smooth and work great. But, okay, now, then, the Beverly kid comes in, and he had a little problem there five years ago, but he's all right, so we'll let him go. And now here comes the Coon kid. He did pretty much the same thing, but maybe a little bit worse, because, because this guy sitting over here doesn't like his dad anyhow. That's how things get going. That's why you got to have it in black and white, right down to the wire. If you do this, you're out. It can't be, we'll come in, we'll talk about it. Because then it's, it's, well, you let, you let Beverly do it, but you won't let Coon do it.
You end up picking and choosing.
Yeah, you can't do that. It has to be...
That's what they do in Defiance, but I don't care. I mean, I'm, I'm done, I'm done putting concrete in, I'm done putting the seats in. Just guys tell me where to deliver them. I've worked my ass off for this town, and I just think it's not fair. And I think people are good.
Wait, wait, Justin, what's not fair? You don't, okay, the background check you agree with.
Background checks, I think are fine.
Okay, so, I, I called for compromise.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get.
And that's what we, and that's where we got a hiccup here.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that this guy's a bad guy. I don't think anybody in here thinks he's a bad guy. I mean, again, I don't wish harm on anybody. I don't want to see each of you leave here and get...
So, do you think we can get this worked out this year yet, and not late?
Tell us when and where.
He what?
Tell us when and where. We'll, we'll sit down and compromise.
And who should be there? And I want, I don't want fighting this all summer long. That's what's going to happen.
That's why-
That's what's gonna happen.
I know that we say, well, it's too late this season, we haven't had any games, or some teams haven't even coached. Uh, I would say nip it in the bud as soon as you can to kill the fire that's blazing, that we're getting our asses raped on. That's what I think, if you're gonna get, you know you're gonna compromise, why not do it now instead of waiting another year?
Well, I, I, I think that's-
What's the compromise?
Well, that's what we're here to try to find out.
Well, we can't-
Can't do it here.
We can't do it right now. We, we, we hear, we hear what you're saying, we've talked about this for many years, and we understand that. But we have come as a council, and when you guys brought this back to council here a couple months back, we were like, everybody's all bored.
Okay, Troy, I've got a question. How would we do this? Compromise?
Part board?
We'd have to meet and come up with something.
Who's, who's "we"?
There's, it was a verbal agreement, there's no ordinance that says what's everybody subject to.
Yeah, 'cause there's a part board rules.
So, we voted to enforce this background check, but we didn't discuss any of the standards, so we're-
I think it was discussed.
It was by what Cory brought in, paperwork Cory had.
By that, I'm Mr. Park Board.
Article, whatever that company is.
Whatever.
Cory had the paperwork for it with the guidelines, correct?
And you guys were invited at that meeting, right, when the park board discussed the background checks and everything?
I went to it.
You were there? I was there.
I mean, I'm not a cop. I don't know what all classifies, I didn't know a negger rigged vehicle wreck classified-
But you guys were all aware of everything beforehand, and then you guys started fielding calls.
There was nothing raised in that meeting.
Yeah, that's why I've been told 100 times, nobody had any complaints with any of it until they start fielding calls for people-
Until, until I heard the-
Saying they can't coach.
Coaches that couldn't possibly coach. Now it became a problem. You yourself was posting stuff on Facebook, alright?
I'm gonna post stuff soon as I leave here, believe me.
Go ahead.
I will.
Alright, because you're posting stuff about one that got flagged, the only one that got flagged, and you're saying it happened 10 years ago, which was not the case.
We didn't post anything about any cases that-
Which, we got, which one are we talking here?
When DVA-
The only one that got flagged.
There's two that got flagged. Man, you, you all get on this board.
Hey, 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 come on, come on, guys.
I know about the laws.
Chief, chief, come on, Justin, that's enough.
Time to go, Justin.
Okay, tell me where to take the seats at. Your house, Danny, or drop them off?
Justin.
Come on, my property, you're going to jail.
Come on, this, okay.
That went well.
Yeah, that went well.
The, the talk and communication, I think, is, is probably, I think, where you guys are going. I think it's kinda a little bit heated right now, just because, you know, I don't want action today. But I think it is something that takes time, something that we need to discuss, especially as, as a group for the, uh, you know, Exmoel Baseball Association, and, and like I said, I think the park board needs to be involved in, in the city as well, to kinda help them make that decision and create a policy.
Well, sir, don't you agree that we can't do it tonight, we need to get together and compare notes and, and achieve something?
Yep.
Exactly, exactly. And I'm all for that.
'Cause it's gonna be festered all summer long.
Oh, yes, yes, it's gotta-
It's, it's gotta stop.
We gotta stop it now, but, but we can't just stop it like snapping your finger.
And social media, I hate it. That's the problem.
The phone calls, though, are coming, they're blaming us for these, thinking we did them, that's, that's one reason Justin's upset, he's fielding phone calls, they all think he's the one behind all this, you know, made rules, but we didn't make no rules on these dang things.
Can I just address this from a part board perspective really quick?
Yes, please.
I had good stuff, I thought, was written, but it's long out the door now. Uh, a couple of things I just, with all due respect, want to address, a couple of things. Mr. Miller has kinda motioned over, when you've mentioned, like, the park board voted down, just for the record, for those that don't know, Lindsay and I weren't on the park board last year, so I have no idea what she was. I have no idea what-
She's, she's president of the park board now, excuse me.
I have no idea what they're talking about. Number two, Mr. Clapper brought up a, a, a valid point, which I think personally, as a park board member, is part of the crux of the problem, is, is your point, and if I'm misstating, please let me know, that you don't have, this is an HBA thing, this is, shouldn't be a village council thing. We're looking at it from a park board saying, well, who's in charge? And for me, and I'm speaking as a park board member, not for the park board, this is where the problem lies. We've got a softball association that runs their league. We've got a junior high baseball program that, don't get me started, is being run by who knows whom and, and who knows why. And then you've got an HBA that is running the little league baseball down there. So, just because the HBA wants to run it a certain way, does that mean that the seventh and eighth grade's gonna do it a different way? And then the girls' softball's gonna do a different way? And this opens up what I think is just a bunch of gray area that just turns this into what it is, and it's a total complete mess. And what I was, what I wanted to ask tonight out of village council is, is we, in my opinion, need to reaffirm, are we doing the background checks?
Yes.
Because I've been told, 'cause I've been on the park board for about a month, and the question I asked mayor, and-
Welcome.
After this was decided, for the record. But my point is, is that I had asked numerous times, is this a unanimous consensus to do background checks? And what I was told every single time was, yes, okay? We can sit here and debate, and that's fine, I'm all for, that's fine, what you want that background check to be? Do you want it to cover this, or this, or this, what's gonna get flagged? That's all debatable. But I think what we're hearing in the community right now is just a back, a pushback on the background checks in general. And we've sat in meetings over the last month where people have stood in front of us and said, we support this 100%, and then you find out two weeks later that they don't support it anymore. As a park board, we're told constantly, well, you don't have the authority to do this. You don't have the authority to do that. Well, what do we have the authority to do then? Because just like the HBA, we're getting phone calls, hacks all, all the time too.
I'm glad. We're not the only one.
No, you're not. And it's just from a park board perspective, this has turned into total chaos. And it doesn't need to be that way. I mean, one of my first comments that I made when I sat on the park board was, this has to be black and white. You give it a gray area, people are gonna funnel for it. It's like a dam with a crack in it, the water's gonna find it, you don't plug the hole, it's just gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger, until boom, it bursts, and then you got a huge problem. So, as a park board, you know, we're sitting here, and, and then how do you implement it? How do you enforce it? That's another thing. You know, I mean, when you've got, I mean, just the basis, the structure of how the recreation programs in the village are run is confusing to me. And I, I don't mean that out of disrespect towards anyone. It's just confusing when you've got different leagues and different organizations, all with different people running them and everything. So, as a park board, I guess, what I would ask is, a little direction, a little reaffirmation from council maybe, to say, we're gonna, I mean, who's got the authority to do this? Because we thought that we were enacting what the council's will was, and then we put that into place, and then we're getting pushed back from people saying, well, you don't have the authority to do that anyway. My opinion is, everyone has a right to go down to that park and watch their kids play. Everyone has the right. And again, this is my opinion, I don't speak on anyone other on the park board other than myself. I believe it's a privilege to coach our kids, and I would say that about my own kids too. It's a privilege to coach them. I support the background checks. Again, we can debate till we're blue in the face what that covers, but we've got one group saying that they don't wanna do this, they wanna do this, another group saying, oh, we're, we're not responsible for this, and another group saying, we're responsi- It's a mess. So, I mean, we can debate what should be covered, what should, but until we get the basic framework in place, we can't even get to the details of this yet. So, for what it's worth, thank you for that.
Adam and I, um, our park board is, is a mess right now. Like we said, um, we had Greg and Justin had pointed out how you have the, a representative from the school side that enforced the strictest of ones, and then sent this kid, I mean, it's just a mess. So, I've been president for five weeks, he's been on here for a month. What Adam and I are willing to do is to put in the work, to restructure new bylaws, to, to make sure all, all parties, softball, everything, and this is just, baseball's played down there three months of, of the year. We also wanna do the center equipment and walking trails, and we're willing to put in the work, and it's gonna be a lot of work, but we just wanna know, it just seems like the buck's being passed a lot of different ways, and we're both new to it, so we just-
And I'm willing to bet that you guys are about as tired of hearing about this as we are.
Oh, my gosh. Mr. Jones, you know, for, did anybody happen to see the, the thing I wrote up that explained? I know you did, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I read it before you said it.
And I thought that kind of explained it pretty well, and Val says she thinks it should be, I mean, put out there, it just, we just need to know what our, our authority is, 'cause it seems like we just keep getting, you know, back and forth. Oh, I'm sorry.
Adam, you defined the problem to a T. Excellent job. Do you have any leadership as where we should head?
Let me turn to page eight in here.
I'm not expecting you to lay out a plan, but just-
That's what we want to do.
It's part- With all due respect, I'm not, this isn't, my opinion is just my opinion, and I'm not, it's just not a criticism on anyone or anything that's been done in the past. But it seems to me that, you know, who's, I mean, who's in charge of the recreation programs in this town? I mean, that's a basic question, but one of the things I did when I first sat on the park board, and they, as she can tell, I asked a million questions, because there were things I just, I couldn't understand. Who's in charge of the rec programs in town? And why? Is it based on where they play? Then if that's, if they're in charge of them, then that person, or group, or whatever, has the authority to, you know, facilitate background checks, or whatever policies they want to. But it's only gonna have the strength if they have council support behind them.
Exactly.
I mean, there has to be a clearly defined chain of command. And I think that puts, to be honest, I think that puts Val in a tough spot. That puts the park board in a tough spot, when we're trying to, you know, we're saying, well, we wanna put this, no one knows who has the ultimate authority in this.
Especially the enforcement part, like, what is-
Troy, your thoughts after hearing all this? Please.
Uh, quickly, one, you need background checks. You know, obviously, I've been the proponent of that from the very beginning. It's multifaceted, one is liability, obviously, which is my major concern, that's my job. Two is, I don't want any kids to, like everybody else, and I'm not trying to suggest anybody in here, or people that have left, want any kids to get hurt, or molested, or anything like that. And I agree with what Adam said, you know, maybe, maybe it needs revisited, the structure, and maybe, you know, you got council, park board, park director, and somebody. I don't think the park director, park board's job is not to run the baseball associations. That, that, in my opinion, that's my opinion, that's not legal or anything, that's not their job. They lined the fields when it was time to play, and you didn't go on them, you didn't, they lined them, and you waited till your game, and then you went on there, and it was no, you know, shenanigans, or whatever, you just did it, and that was part of the structure to it. If it rained that day, you know, the people affiliated with the parks said, no, we can't play, it's gonna ruin the field, game's off. And no coach questioned it, nobody argued and said, oh, we can still get on there and play, we can still get our season in, that's-
They argued.
Well, they may have argued. But anyway, but that was the final word on it, was, nope, you can't play, we said, you can't play. That's what the park board, and the park director, and everybody along with all the other things that go to running the park, the pool, the, you know, mowing grass, and killing weeds, and all that stuff that makes it such a beautiful place, and place that people wanna go. Nobody's trying to prohibit, uh, kids from being able to play, enjoy the park, enjoy baseball. None of this is designed for that purpose, nor is it designed to specifically exclude any individual. I fall in the category, and I'm not opposed, uh, to Lindsay's idea about maybe restructuring some of the what's disqualifying and what's not, and I would agree with her that felony crimes of violence and sex offenses of any level should be automatic disqualifiers, in my opinion. You start getting in gray areas when you get into like drug possession, OVI, and, and again, and prosecuting those type of things, I think I'm uniquely situated to understand some of those things and the different things that go with it. I will say, in response to somebody's previous comment, um, Exmoel's great, obviously, I, I don't live here anymore, but I grew up here. It's not, as far as the composition of the people that live here, it's not what it was when I was a kid, and it's certainly not what it was when Ron was a kid, or anybody else that, that grew up here, as far as everybody, you know, when I was in school, nearly, and Greg, I'm, Greg's not much younger than me, um, nearly everybody that was there had at least one parent who had gone to school at Exmoel, if not both of them. And slowly, which is a good thing for growth purposes, people have moved in, people have come from other directions, got a great school, people wanna go there, but as you do that, and you open it up, kinda like Lou was talking about, I mean, they're so big, and there's so many people coming in and out of defiance, that all the people on that board can't possibly know all the people that may wanna coach. The same thing applies here, and, and Mark and I are probably uniquely situated to know, and I'm not gonna name any names, but we know things about people that live in the town that other people don't know, and there may be somebody down there, and I'm not, I'm seriously not thinking of a specific situation, where Greg, you've known somebody for 40 years, they went away to college for four or five years, something happened when they were in college, and you don't even know about it, and they might be, you know, they might have some type of sex offense from when they were in college. And just because you knew them since you were six and went to kindergarten with them, and they may be a great guy and, and enjoyable, you may not know that at some point they had a little turn, and maybe got into drugs, and did something or whatever, and that's the, the day and age we live in, and that's why even in a small town, where I agree, probably 75 or 80% of them, you guys that are on the board, you probably have known them for a long time, at least.
My problem, real quick with this, is, look, I don't want anything to do with this background check, but when I get phone calls from a guy that said, look, you know, this happened 20 some years ago, I haven't even told my kids about this. You know, I've coached in the last four years down there, now it's gonna come out to my kids, what happened, you know, when it's like, that's where I'm like, look, we're running a baseball board, we're trying to better everything down there, I'm not getting paid, I don't wanna deal with these phone calls, you know, I feel horrible talking to this guy. It's like, I don't want anything to do with this. I mean, that's-
Stop that, though.
But, but, that's, that's my problem with it. I mean, that's one reason why I'm here, that's one reason why I'm so passionate about it. I don't wanna deal with that. I don't wanna deal with that. I want the kids to go down there and play ball, I wanna help Val and Gary the best we can, to better that park down there. That's what we want.
And I think you brought, you brought-
I don't want.
You brought Lou here, and basically what he's saying is, they do deal with that. I mean, they're not even mandated by the city, they, they mandated the background checks, and then they, they get sent in, they get the reports back, they decide who's good to go and who's not good to go. And I don't know, I'm not in that process, I've never been on the board or anything, but they also-
None of the park board members have had, looked at the-
It was, he was talking about, though, about disciplining a coach for cussing out a kid, or grabbing a kid, or whatever. I mean, he's talking about code of conduct, for lack of a better term, somewhat minor disciplinary issues in the way you conduct your league. He's not talking about, hey, because of something that happened in somebody's background, we're gonna go and give him a free pass because we met and talked with him, and we think he's a great guy. He's talking about some kid cussed somebody else's kid out on the field, and that's a no-no under the code, so we took him out of there, but then when he came to me and he apologized, and, you know, told me that he was gonna go to his team and apologize to them, yeah, but whatever, that's, that's good enough, I mean, as long as everybody's convinced. But there's, there's gotta be on the background check, and maybe the compromise is the way to do it, there's gotta be black and white on that, because you don't wanna set your, yourself up for the situation Ron described, where, uh, whoever's making the decision, and once we get to that point, they just say, well, we, we like this guy over here, and yeah, he's got that in his background, but, you know, he's buddies with a couple of the guys, so we're gonna let him in, but we're not gonna let this guy in because, you know, quite frankly, he's a jerk, or whatever. Or eat something that's even more sinister, you know, you know, we got this person over here, and I'm not saying anybody would do this, but he's a minority, and we don't want him in here, but this guy is fine, or whatever. You don't wanna open yourself up to any of those type of issues, and the way to do it is by having a black and white, this year in, this year out, type of thing, and again, it could be open to adjustment for those things. When the discussion of the school rules were made, I think everybody could agree, obviously, the state thinks those guidelines are pretty important, otherwise they wouldn't have required every, uh, school in the state to apply by them, and they're talking about kids from age five, six to 18, so we're maybe in that range, or whatever. Why wouldn't the same rules apply for the same reasons that the state said are necessary for coaches, bus drivers, volunteers, teachers, principals, you know, administrators, or whatever? And that's why I, honestly, and again, I didn't sit in all those meetings, but I think that's why it was picked, it's, it's easy to defend it-
I, I understand.
Because it's in the code.
I'm telling you guys, we're the, can, we all agree this is a big headache. It's a big headache, these background checks.
It's a necessary headache, though.
It's a big headache. I'm telling you where this is gonna go. If you force it on like it is with this HBA, down there taking these phone calls, yielding this, about these background checks, and like the way defiance does it, I think you're gonna have a tough time getting a baseball board. I'm telling, I'm just telling you that right now, I'm not, I'm not making threats, I'm, it's not what we signed up-
But we won't have anybody's fault, we said anyhow.
It's a shame, 'cause it's about the kids, that's what I keep hearing, it's about the kids, and it shouldn't be about the kids.
If the HBA got a phone call, and then you could just say, this person is the one that's in charge of it, and then you don't have to deal with it. That's part of this. Why does the HBA have to deal with it? Why does the, I mean-
Okay, Greg, we'll be happy with the, with the compromise, so that-
That's what I said, tell us when and where, and we'll sit down and talk about it.
And then, well, I think we're talking about now, and then-
We can't decide it tonight, you know, we're not gonna decide tonight. Yes, I, I would be happy with the compromise, yes, 100%.
And then on your side, you-
Sooner than later.
Force it, and then-
Get it all working.
I guess where Adam and I are coming from, this is where council comes in, is, I mean, right, it has been a headache, is I've been present at the port for five weeks, he's been on for a month, and I've been in Mr. Jones's office three times, and we are truly trying to do this the right way, and I just feel like there's, there's no, no support, it's like, I make a pretty intelligently written post that explains everything, and go over it with Jones, and then, oh, the council member had a problem with that, and then I have a meeting with these guys, and then, well, you should've never went out there, and then, well, they railroad you, and then when they didn't railroad you, well, then they're gonna- And what you're seeing tonight is what I have been dealing with for a month straight, and what, you said it today, what's gonna happen if two people, you know, you said you don't wanna see Adam and I go, and then, we just, we need to figure it out, but I think we need to be pragmatic enough to realize, not every side's gonna be 100% happy. And I think the compromise we talked about today is a, is a starting point, but Greg, the HBA has to enforce it then.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
Can you, uh, take it upon yourself, set up a committee of whoever you choose, and then set up a date with Greg, and Lindsay, and Adam, set, set something up, and hash this thing out? There's no sense, I mean, we can talk about this all night long.
Make sure, make sure you add the softball board on there.
Yeah.
And what about many ACES football?
That's not, that's not-
It's controlled by the school.
That's- Like the, the third and fourth grade, fifth and sixth grade is?
It was only there because of COVID, it's, it's been on school property all, every other year than last year.
So, fifth and sixth grade coaches are background screened through the school?
Their volunteer coach, or any volunteer coach at school has to get a background check.
I didn't get a background check, no.
No, that was my question. So, like, I guess, we're, we're obviously, obviously, HBA and SBA, or, and softball association are the hot topics, but what about many ACES football?
On school property.
It's the school.
Now, Lucas Smith did reach out to me, and you, we'll just have to ask him this. He had just, the only question he asked is, are the background checks good for a year? So, maybe he, who knows, he might be thinking of making them implemented, maybe not, but that's a question for, I don't think it makes any sense to bring up many ACES right now.
Here's the thing, we practice all over that park for many ACES, so, 'cause a lot of times junior high in Varsity, so a lot of times we're by the pavilion, by the tennis courts and stuff, so it's not always on school, like many ACES.
I think it's pretty simple to be-
But, that whole basis of everything is the Jerry Sandusky rule and organized practices and that sort of thing, so if we're gonna, if they're potentially gonna use the park, then they have to be at the table.
It's their own park property.
Their own park-
Which is potential.
Yeah.
So, who's in charge of the many ACES football association?
The mayor will find out, and he will contact, he will get ahold of everybody involved.
Well, I think that goes to the-
Do you want just me, or you want a couple council members?
I think that talks-
Well, they said a committee, a council member.
Yes, three? That will include you, y'all, him and his committee, based out of-
And I'm willing to, but I'm not willing to get screened out.
Okay, yeah, we gotta put this to rest, and that's one of the reasons we didn't go into executive session. That would've done no good, need the public, so everybody knows what's going on. So, I'm looking around the table here. I'd like to have Eric. Taylor. Kent, how about you? Just kidding.
I think Troy should be on it, being in the-
Well, I don't need on the committee, but I can be there. Yeah, he's, he's a gift.
Yeah.
I'm here.
I'm gonna write this down, who I named. Taylor.
I think just two councilmen's enough.
You might just wanna brush up on our ordinance on what the park board and park director are responsible for, before you get too far.
And I think we need to meet soon. And all it is, is, and, you know, what kind of power does the park board have?
There's lots of rules there, and then I don't know what's on this. What's that? I don't see any police boards, or is that a council? I think there's another two that are there. Let's put a committee together of us, softball, the park board, you guys, it's like one or two people, no? And go over the flags, the guidelines, and we'll sit down and vote on the flag, if there's something that's flagged, and we wanna discuss it or whatever.
That's what we want you to do.
No, 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 we, we don't wanna go case by case.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, no, not case by case.
Interview it, then vote it back.
I mean, I'm speaking for, for myself.
That's what defiance does, I mean, what's-
Doesn't mean they're doing it right. Doesn't mean they're doing it right way. I mean, doesn't mean it's right because they do it.
Because Troy had to take one of the coaches.
Where did you guys?
That's not, it was my idea well before I coached anything.
What did you guys base your grounds for refusal on?
Basically on the background check law that came from Tech U Sports. So we spoke that and because we can have it from, like, there's a number of things that you can actually go on.
And personal belief.
Yes.
And that's not good.
Wait, wait, what did you say?
Personal belief.
No, it's not personal.
How you feel, your personal feelings about how you're explaining this case for this particular gentleman and your feelings come into this.
But it's not just me.
No.
This is a board of.
Exactly. But you can sway the board or your opinions. It needs to be black and white and it needs to be set in a meeting and it needs to be done.
So you guys have a basis for refusal?
That's what I've been asking for for the last.
So do you guys have a list of offenses that are automatic disqualifiers?
Can you provide us with that list?
Sure. I can study the policy if you like.
And you guys have a, so do you guys require every coach or is there? Because I read your guys' code of conduct.
Yep.
And it says that every coach is subject to, not necessarily every coach is required.
Every coach is required, yes.
Okay, so everybody gets a background check?
Yep.
Okay.
But you guys, you do have a black and white, this is a absolute no due to this chart?
Like I said, in our policy, it spells that out. And that way it's stepped, it's numbered, it's actually even step one, step two, step three, step four, step five, there's a series of, you know, I mean, especially if something comes back. Now, granted, we really haven't had, and because here's the thing, I'm not, you know, we have the background checks, a lot of times that deters people from coming.
That's exactly what they're describing. There were two guys that didn't apply.
Yes.
And that, I mean, so otherwise we would have had three potentially or four.
We also had, you know, some come back that was, you know, 20 years ago or even 10 years ago or something like that. And, you know, we looked at that because the thing is, is that I want to see the number of offenses that you had.
So you guys don't necessarily, so you have a rule of yeses and nos.
Yep.
But it's subject to discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
It's under the board review.
And it depends on how.
This is just the executive members and that league's president. That's it. So if we were to bring that person in and interview them or something like that, like, let's say that, you know what, we're half and half. Or let's decide to talk to this person. We'll bring them in and then we'll actually interview them, you know, with our subsequent questions. What are you doing now? You know, what have you done, you know, as far as what are you involved in, you know, so on and so forth? Like basically your service to community. I mean, have you been doing other things or, you know? And like I said, if there's like multiple offenses, then that's a hard no. I mean, because obviously there's a pattern there and that's something you don't want.
Do you guys, are you guys required by the city to carry liability insurance?
We do have insurance, yes.
So is that a requirement by the city or is that self-elected?
That's just basically what we've done for years. I can't say that that's from the city.
Does the HBA have liability insurance?
Do we?
Do you guys have a liability?
So I think Greg, we are already on a good path to a compromise. We've got this committee going. We're not pushing it off until next year. We're going to sit down now, right?
Yes.
An issue that I've even had with my own board, I'll be honest, our park board's a mess right now. We're blowing it up and kind of starting all over or hoping to, right? But in the meantime, we live in a small town and then don't even get me started on the 49 thing and how they're propagating this whole thing. So in the meantime, instead of getting all of our social media and disseminating your viewpoint or false information, can we just make an agreement until we sit down to not get everybody all riled up, this community all riled up and just, does that make sense?
I'd like to see.
I just think it's nice.
Two from each, you know, your little league, two, two from the park, you and Adam, I'm guessing. Two in the council. What about girls? Yeah, so I think two is plenty. We don't need the whole park board. We don't need.
Sure.
That's my opinion.
I'd like to get this going sooner than later, though.
Well, I'm looking this weekend. When's Little League start or?
So they've already started practicing their games. The first game, I believe, is May 3rd, if I'm correct.
Okay.
I'm serious.
How early Wednesday? I'm going to shoot for Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
We have a meeting.
We have a park board meeting Wednesday.
No, that's right.
You're scheduled it.
That's right.
Yeah, we have a park board meeting at 5:00 Wednesday. And I'm going to tell the people that barely show up, listen, we're kind of on scorched earth and starting all over, so you need to.
We have the power of that committee and everybody compromise and then move on consistently.
Mostly people need to realize.
Okay, let's wrap it up. Let's go, let's wrap it up.
So wait, so Ron, when's the Jones? Will you be making those calls?
Lou, can I have a copy of that? You send it to me, I'll send it to the rest of them.
Sounds good. I was going to ask you guys for a car.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a handshake here.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. I want it this week.
This week?
I have a meeting Wednesday.
It shouldn't last very long Wednesday.
No.
Our park board meeting's at 5:00.
You need to change that.
So if we could do.
I think 20 minutes, I can have this.
Holy bejimy, sorry.
No, 20 minutes on Wednesday for the other one. For administrators' position. You want to shoot for 4 o'clock?
We have a park board meeting at 5:00 and.
Oh, 3:30.
This meeting is more important than any meeting that you could ever have.
Oh, I know, I know, Ron, I know that.
I will tell you, I'm going to have a problem on Wednesday because I got it out.
Well, we'll call if you need me. We have any questions.
What I want to do.
All it is is a compromise.
It'll probably be good to have it earlier because what I want to do is be able to go back to our park board and say, listen, the park board is no longer show up for 20 minutes and do some vote and then don't follow the rules. We're going to do it the right way. We're setting new bylaws. We're kind of going scorched earth and setting all over. If you don't want to be on the board, then get out.
Hey, could you delay your park board meeting an hour?
Absolutely.
And then we'd have time to get our.
I can vouch this, the meetings are no longer just 20 minutes. We're in and out. I can vouch for that.
I really don't think it's going to take that long.
Here?
Let's go to the park, can we have one more room?
Oh, in the pavilion?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So it's Wednesday?
3:30?
3:30.
3:30, 3:30 on Wednesday?
First one thing I'll take that long.
And then do you want Val and Gary there too since, well, she's the park director, I imagine.
Absolutely.
Okay, hey, welcome to what my life's been the last.
I apologize, this running, but it need to be taken care of.
Absolutely.
It just, it would have been an awful summer if we wouldn't have. I'm not saying we're going to have it solved, but, okay. Okay, moving along.
Okay, so can Adam and I take off?
Yeah. Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Adam.
Boards and commissions, Hicks TV Board, Matt, March 20th, any questions on that? Okay, council committee reports. Lord and Sower Committee.
Michael.
Masseges? Oh, can't order it up.
Pretty, well, yeah, pretty cut and dry. Unless you got a question about something, the three of you were there.
Let me ask, let me ask a question quick and it's just food for thought. We're not going to beat that horse to death. We pay, on average, we pay $10,000 a month to keep that sewer plant pumps running. That's our electric bill, on average. Sometimes it's nine, sometimes it's 12, depends on whether we're burning the lights in the summertime for the ammonia. $10,000 to $12,000 a month. There are solar companies that will come in and generate your place. You probably know all about it, like from the school. They'll come in and it won't cost you a dime and they'll set you up. I think we need to look at that. I mean, you know, that's $120,000 a year that we could be applying to a new building or to a street or a sewer project. I think we need to look into that. That is all.
Personnel Committee, Matt, April 14th.
I think we did pretty well. Yep, we had four candidates. They were all really good candidates and after a lot of discussion about the four candidates, we all voted unanimously 3-0 to recommend Charlie Martin, the council, and the mayor for the council seat.
Okay, any questions for Eric? Okay, administrators report.
Hopefully blow through this. The first one there about the meeting, the virtual meeting we had with funders. Unless anybody's got a question, I pretty much summed it up. We don't qualify for any grants. We're sitting in good enough financial shape. They think we've got money to repay loans. We don't really need their help. But before you go slashing rates, that's not going to help you either because then you're not showing a good faith effort, kind of a catch 22 there. So at this point, we can get 0% design loans and low interest loans for future construction. Now, things might change six months to a year or whatever, but for now that was sort of the answer.
Do we have a nailed down scope on that yet?
Nope, he is coming, was it 4:30 or 4:00? Yeah, before the next council meeting. I don't remember if it's 3:30 or what he's going.
Did you respond to my emails, gentlemen? We had set up a meeting.
Didn't I get one?
Say, I don't think we set that out yet.
No.
Because I don't remember getting that. You and I talked.
That's why nobody responds. No, no. I respond. I got it tight.
I think it's 4:30 on the 30th.
8:30 before it counts.
So at what point do we have to go about 0%? I guess at what point are we dictating what amount that loan is if it's for design?
Well, that just means if we were doing anything right now, we could get a 0% design loan.
But aren't we in the midst of design currently?
Well, yeah, for that.
So is that a reimbursement?
Well, I don't.
I mean, you're just financing money that's already spent?
Yeah, it would be. They might grow retroactive. You'd have to talk to whichever funder that was. That was USDA.
That's what I was curious, so it basically.
Oh, no, that was OEP.
Can you address change orders essentially in design and that's how that's funded?
We'd have to ask them how they would do that.
Didn't we try that once before?
I don't think retroactive.
No, but just trying to get them to pay back on the design we had. I don't know if it was Design Avenue or Clearout by Tryden.
East Cornelia, that principle of forgiveness, they covered that. But that was a different funder.
I was just curious, we can move on.
Well, it's worth a try.
Yeah.
Anything's worth a try.
Well, I mean, just looking for clarification.
Well, Troy will do the legislation. If anybody's got any questions on the truck from Schmidt's.
Is that like state-funded, state?
No, that's why he had to go to bid.
Oh, yeah? Why wouldn't they do that?
He's not part of the state purchasing.
statewide, could you get one cheaper from statewide?
No, I went through the state purchasing. They don't have F-450s this year. They've only got some Rams and Sierras.
Okay.
But anyway, this has got to take the place of the big 93 plow trucks, the bid on its shop. We've worked on it before. And due to a shortage of chips, it might take months and months. That's why I asked Troy to bring it in as an emergency. We want to have it serviced for this upcoming winter. If it takes five, six, seven months.
Or tomorrow.
To build. Well.
Going to have to use the old one tomorrow.
Yeah.
Do we have any COVID money left?
I can't spend that for anything.
How's going to defiance can, we always talk about defiance. How's going to defiance can pay their overtime, police overtime and everything and we can't?
We can.
No, no.
We can.
We can.
Yeah.
But anyhow, Aqua Line did start today, go back in tomorrow, maybe another day after that.
Just tomorrow.
And big flagpole, looks like it's fixed. It's held up in the wind anyway. And I said thanks to Jared for trucking and time helping on that. Caleb did some fabrication. The innards in it were what was shot. We couldn't get stuff pulled out. That's what took so long. You got the hours people worked this past quarter. And I guess if anybody's got any questions, fire away.
Any questions for Kent?
Kent, to address what Susan Mack brought up earlier, do we still have money aside for trash cans?
Well, yeah, we bought that a while ago.
Well, I was getting ready to order them like last March when COVID hit and everybody threw the brakes on spending, not knowing how it was going to hit general funds. That's why nothing happened.
You still have money in the budget for those?
Yeah, they don't, too wild on the sizes. I mean, you could get $5,000 trash cans if you really went.
So who's in charge of selecting those?
Well, we were, I was kind of talking with the committee back then on what colors they were thinking of getting and I told them what colors I'd be getting. I thought they had settled on black, but that might have changed in a year or two, so.
And then our, it was brought up with the beautification committee that streetlights were getting painted here soon. Is that true or is that just?
News to me.
I heard it. I heard it. I've heard.
I was curious, is that, are those up for repaint?
It wasn't, I mean, they need it. I'm not debating that, but I wasn't planning to get them done.
If we did repaint, would we paint them green again?
I would advocate for a color change personally.
Black ones?
That'd go along with your black trash bags.
That's, yeah, that's obviously been a discussion of, I get all the beautification committee updates and it's been.
Maybe even right in your ear a little bit.
Pretty close.
Why have you been talking so much about it? His routing points.
He's young, Larry, he's young.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what it costs to do the light poles.
Well, I'm not advocating for painting them. I was curious if they're, if you were scheduling them to be painted and if all of the other fixtures uptown are going to be black, I would advocate to.
I agree.
Sync them.
Yeah, to match.
Yeah.
We don't want a pearl shy brush job on them posts with some cheap paint that you're going to have to paint every year and twice a year.
I do know on those, the coating they used to make them and the first coating of paint.
It's powder coat.
It's more than that because I did have, see our hunt look at them a few years back, just kind of seeing what we would need to do. I think it's going to be rather lever intensive to get down to the finish to redo them just because of the finish they have now. But I never got any prices or anything on that.
Is that something scheduled for this year?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't know where that one would have come from.
No, I've never heard that.
With the flower pots, is there any place where you can have local businesses do sponsorship? When I lived in German Village many years ago, they had beautiful planters that were probably about that long, about that wide section all along Parsons Avenue. And then they had a place for sponsorship for the local businesses that wanted to, you know, granted, that was kind of like Columbus area. There's so many more businesses available, but I didn't know if that was an option that you guys could utilize to maybe reallocate some of those funds if businesses wanted to pay for those planters.
Well, I think the planners, beautification committee has the money to pay for the planners.
Right.
It's the trash cans, I guess, that are the municipal side, right?
Yeah.
So Kent, you're going to look for trash cans this year yet?
Well, yeah, I can.
In conjunction with Sue.
Could they maybe advertise on those trash cans? Maybe businesses put an advertisement and pay for it towards an advertising.
What are the price ranges of the trash cans you've seen? Anywhere from five hundred to a thousand?
Well, they got to be heavy enough they won't blow around or kids make off with them.
About twelve hundred.
Or adults.
Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred.
How many trash cans do we have currently? Ref estimate, it doesn't have to be exact.
Six or seven.
Okay.
So we probably need to get a figure eight, maybe four for each side.
Okay.
I think at one point it was anywhere from thirteen to fifteen thousand, give or take.
For all the trash cans?
Thirteen, fifteen.
Okay.
Actually, while we're on that subject, sorry, the street, you had mentioned a while back about something along the lines of ODOT scheduling rework through High Street and that if there were any suggestions for any improvements on that street that we needed to start discussing those now?
Well, that was for the downtown. Yeah, if you had a thing you wanted to get done.
What is that timeline?
Though, I think, an email, if they bid the job in November, they thought maybe construct or maybe paving would start in the May of twenty twenty-two timeframe.
It's better than it was.
If you wanted to be adding handicap spaces or whatever.
If we've got two that we should actually make true one hundred percent, they will pass ADA inspection handicap spots.
Slope of that road's pretty difficult with the crown. It's going to be pretty difficult to get a minimum of two percent cost slope cornered or cornered.
No, not really. On the locations, like the one that's up in front of Nikki Bailey, Nikki Miller.
Hair salon?
Yeah. They're using the Expo Bank as the ramp, their driveway. It would never, it would never pass if we were ever inspected. And she, she is the one that cuts my hair and she is the one that tells me every time that it would be nice if there was a cut in there, head right into her door. But we could make that work.
Would that make, would it be wise to put together a committee to discuss?
We have street light.
I would include the public.
Sure. No, you're opening a can of worms there?
We did that. We went down that road.
Yeah.
We have a street light.
Let's just judge them.
Change the angle, Parker.
And they give.
Let's put a sign up there for fifteen minutes.
They can give the committee direction?
I mean, from a downtown perspective, the whole downtown image, that's, I think that's something we need to consider.
Get, get all the committee. This is what we'd like.
Okay.
Okay. What do you think, Ron?
Yeah, works for me.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, solicitors report, Troy.
First thing I have is ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero six, first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. Think you got questions? You got, Cheryl?
I'm going to suspend the rules.
What is that for? CDBG?
Which CDBG grant?
It's money we received and he can't spend it until we put it in the budget.
And that's.
That was for the Smith Street paving job.
A second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero six by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
It's a move. Second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero five, first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to purchase a new Ford F four fifty truck from Jim Schmidt Ford for use as a plow truck and declaring an emergency.
Maybe we suspend the rules.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes. He said yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero five by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to purchase a new Ford F four fifty truck from Jim Schmidt Ford for use as a plow truck and declaring an emergency.
Suspend.
Second. Roll call.
Who is first?
Changing now.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Just change it before you sign it. This is twenty twenty-one.
That is the capital fund number. Not the year.
And the last thing I have is resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero six, a first reading by caption only, a resolution opposing sub house bill one fifty-seven amending the law regarding withholding municipal earned income tax for those working virtually and or at home.
Suspend.
I see any of that as an emergency.
Yeah, roll call. Scott's got to be in tomorrow.
Committee's meeting.
Scott's got to be in tomorrow.
Suspend the rules. Second. What is this for?
They're trying to amend the, you know, the state took, kind of took over the income tax collection and they're basically trying to amend or modify the rules for the people that are working virtually or at home as opposed to at their location that might be within the village or whatever. So it's, normally it would be withheld, is that, I'm understanding that correctly, Rachel?
Yes.
So if the business was in the village, they would withhold for an employee who doesn't live within the village, but because they're working from home and not physically in the employment in the village, they're not going to withhold those funds then.
So we're going to lose that money?
They're going to lose that money.
And then why would we want to vote against for this?
We're not. We're opposing it.
Okay.
And they're meeting tomorrow. That's why I need it tonight.
Does somebody make a motion?
Did we do roll call yet?
No. Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Can't tell you.
Yes. Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Second, third reading, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero six by caption only, a resolution opposing sub house bill one fifty-seven amending the law regarding withholding municipal earned income tax for those working virtually or at home.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
So you got any questions for Troy? Make it brief, Troy. Okay, department heads. Chief, police?
One thing I got is they were down to work on the Marx radios last Wednesday. Actually, he was here the week before and found while I was on vacation and they found that the repeaters are not working like they were supposed to. They took one back to the shop. They brought one back and it's still not working like it's supposed to. So he checked the radio strength on the port, on one of our portables. He had a portable with him and it was, the portable he had said was half the price of the one that we are currently using and he had a better signal strength with that radio than we did with ours. And we were standing there in front of the garage doors of the police department. And so he adjusted one portable and it was getting up to the signal strength that he had on his. So we are trying that to see how it's working.
Has the nine one one center, have they talked about putting a tower up here?
We have actually, I've talked to Mike Barth about this and we talked about, Matt and I had a meeting. They're working on something about a tower and we brought up with something about SWT, maybe checking with them to see if they could help us out with that. Mike has had discussion with them. I don't think it's going to pan out like we want it to pan out, but I do have a nine one one board meeting on the thirtieth and that's going to be part, I believe there's a gentleman from Mark's going to be there and we're going to talk about the issue of the tower.
Didn't we discuss that, the water sewer committee?
Yeah, it's on the minutes.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I think you're talking totally about a Marx tower.
Yeah, the county mentioned that.
Oh, okay.
Looking with a Marx tower.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
They're looking at, from what I heard via the street is, is the sheriff's department and nine one one center is looking at a tower just before that.
Yeah, it's a Marx tower. It has to be built to the state standards because they sell it back, the county sells it back to the state.
And then they're hoping to put it at the state building by the school because it's already secured and is on state owned property. So.
We got, we did get an update at the last meeting that they are actively working on that, just if you didn't know that.
Yeah, I knew that. So I didn't know they had discussed that with you guys, so, but that's part of our topics at that meeting on the thirtieth.
Okay, any other questions for chief? That they didn't tell you about that?
About?
The tower and, or you knew something about it?
Yeah, I knew that it wasn't going to work out for what we had proposed and I knew that we were having a meeting about the tower and it was the one, the meeting Matt and I had.
Okay, good. That's good.
So.
The vehicle's working well?
I'm still waiting on radios. So we're in our third week, going into our third week waiting on radios to come in. So I can get radios equipped in and then we can use them. So, I mean, we can technically use them now with a portable, but to be out in full reserve, I'd rather have them mobile in there. So, and I discussed some things with Cheryl today about equipment and stuff, so.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Okay, thanks, chief.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Scott, you're up. Fire chief, EMS.
We had a big log list, but I'll cut it down a little bit. I would like a PFE meeting next week. I'm unable to this week. Sounds like you guys aren't either. So maybe we can get together afterwards and.
Yeah.
Figure it out. The new breathing air compressor has been wired in. They're coming tomorrow to finish hooking it up, put the new bottles and stuff in. It'll be up and running tomorrow afternoon, hopefully. The old equipment that we've replaced, what can I do with that? Do I need?
It's got value. Some place or? If it's got value, you got to try to sell it. If you're saying it's got little to no value, then I'd say it could be donated or dealt with that way. Usually we do like ordinance to deal with that. I remember we donated something one time to some other department for something.
Last air packs got to load, donated to another department.
Yeah.
These air packs, the bottles are going to be expired. So anywhere in the United States, they wouldn't be able to utilize them, but if we go to South America, I've got an outlet to get rid of that stuff.
I mean, if they got no use.
Down there, they're all coming up here.
True.
They got no use. They got no value.
Any value. We didn't get any money out of them, but.
Yeah. I'd say if they've been determined to not have value, I'll get with them on that and see what we need to do.
And as far as like the old air compressor and stuff, I don't know. There might be somebody that can use that. I don't know if we could sell that.
Could put it on.
On GOV.
Gov deals or whatever and, you know, sells for ten dollars. It sells for ten dollars.
What do I need to do to that? Because I have another piece of equipment that needs to go on GOV deals.
Yeah, Kent might know.
Do I need any legislation on?
I think we have.
Of that.
We got where we can do stuff just when it comes up, you know?
If you get with Mike, he handles that into things with pictures and whatever.
And I think that's all I have.
Three fifty or four fifty?
I think it's four.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Right along fiscal officer, Cheryl. We already talked about the park. Are you sure? Sorry. Were you going to ask?
Go to the park board first.
Okay, well, no, that's fine.
He's going to plow the fields for Wednesday. No blood. Ready to play. Salman's out there.
Any, any other questions for the park director?
We beat that horse now.
Yeah, that's why I skipped.
Hey, you have a copy of the fund status as of today and you also have the cash summary by fund that shows all of our revenue and expenditures so far this, for the month of April and mayor's court report, which looks really good, mayor.
Is that Mayor Bassett on this one or?
Both of them. It's a really good report. Twelve hundred and sixty-six dollars in mayor's court costs we received.
See the, High Street's making some money.
Well, these guys are pleading not guilty.
They're challenges.
Okay, any questions for fiscal officer? Okay, mayor's report, I had quite a bit. I'll try to convince it. I was contacted by Addie Sailor, who is a human resource manager at Community Memorial Hospital. They want to put together a community cleanup day for early May, not soon, hasn't been set. So if anybody has any ideas or suggestions for Addie for cleanup around the village, please contact her either by phone or email. Get ahold of me and I can get you the number. Could be painting, yard work, any type of cleanup.
That'd be a full time job initially.
Yeah. Do you volunteer, Fish? They can meet on his porch. And I think you all got the letter from Kent, once I pick a, from you that's in there, just some ideas.
Well, one thing, it's like two months old here.
I know.
I think lots changed since then.
Not really. But I am meeting Wednesday, the committee, Cheryl, myself, Kent, Eric. Going to meet Wednesday for the administrator to get a start. It's not going to be long. We're just going to organize and then hopefully in a week or maybe a year or two, we'll pick a new administrator.
That'll be good.
Yeah, new guy might be done by then.
So anyway, just kind of let you know what's going on. You all got a letter from Stephanie Carrickson, Majeur. I wasn't going to read it. You guys can read your own. And I want to thank the four people applied for the open council seat, Sheila Baker, Thomas Luterman, Charlie Martin and John Hart. So appreciate some people that want to step up to be on the council. So that's encouraging. I had a health department meeting last Friday. Some of the stats I got, thirty-three percent in Defiance County has their first vaccine and twenty-five percent of the citizens are complete, twenty-five percent. I think it's a little low. I encourage people to get the vaccine. I'm tired of, of course, I didn't have this on much tonight, but I'm tired of these. So get the vaccine. I think we should end the meeting with a prayer now, right? So anything else needs to come before this council?
Probably a year and a half ago, we had talked about the dirt hill in the back of the pavilion because of the back walls and the restroom.
Yes.
Getting all that moisture and issues. Is there any plans to do anything with that?
I haven't heard a thing.
Kent got pricing. How many years ago was that, Kent? Two, three years ago?
Engineering.
For engineering, is that the engineering estimate?
Quarter of a million to tear it down and redo all the electrical and structural.
And when we see the price, we were a little shell shocked.
Now, that was with prevailing weeds and some of that, but still you're looking at a good chunk of chain.
Good point. Well, we've talked about it too, Corey. I mean, being kind of. I haven't been in there for a while, so I'm still sure the moisture is still bad.
Back walls are all bubbled up real bad. Yeah, concrete starting to hang up.
Okay, anything else? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Relinquished authority.
New guy gets bonus points.
Welcome aboard. You had a good first meeting.
Very interesting.
If you can make it after tonight, you'll be fine. My record has been fifteen minutes. So I kind of blew that out of the water as far as almost two hours. So it needed to be everything needed to get out in the open.
Yeah.
And hopefully Wednesday.
Yes.
That's, we'll see what happens, so.
I don't know.
Roll call? Did we have to do a roll call yet?
Did you check? Just tell them I have anything to add?
I didn't hear this show.
How'd that go for you?